Dr. Cortenino, here. Mr. Doctor, here. Mrs. Fano, here. Mr. Garat, here. Mr. Palma, here. Mr. Pedradino, here. Mr. Rattleford, here. And Zuckerman, here. Dr. Mograph, here. Ms. Viall, here. Mr. Sung, here.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Mr. Fai, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Oakton Public Meeting Ball was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced no sign to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Public Schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the District Website, an average in the Daily Record, and the Montpel Tap into It, the Official Report, the Newspapers of the War, on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Ms. Viall, Mr. Sung, has Nathan gone on a odd number there by his way?
Yeah, so we're just gonna start off with some stuff that happened in the recent past. So starting off on Friday, May twenty fourth, the seniors had their senior breakfast, as I mentioned, in Mount Lakes. And all the seniors had a great time eating breakfast and watching the News and Show. And then also on Thursday, May thirtieth, the seniors had their prom at the Grove. And the night was filled with fun and a lifetime of good memories. And then the next day on May thirty first, the winners of the Research in Molecular Biology and Poster Symposium were announced. And students Biggs and Eva, Iran, and Ewing, Karakaya, went out to represent MTHS at Rutgers University's Poster Symposium on June fourth. Then they also had the Second Annual Montpel Barstool Hockey Formal Tournament, which took place on Saturday, June eighth. The tournament raised a lot of money for our high school's hockey team. Then on Monday, June tenth, the seniors participated in the annual MHS fundraiser by placing their handprint in the stairwell off the rotunda. These handprints will be a constant reminder of our students who graduated just two days. Also on June tenth, the senior class officers worked with administration to hold the first Senior Sunset in the Institute. This event offered the students a chance to socialize, play backyard lawn games, and bond as a class. And then at eight thirty P M, the class officers showed the premiere of a montage they've been working on for several months, featuring a compilation of videos and pictures of the class of twenty twenty four since their earliest days in Montpel Township Public Schools. And also an extra special thank you to Christina Rinnabski for all of her hard work in putting together the video. Then we had Senior Awards, which was hosted on the night of June twelfth. Our seniors received many local and state scholarships and awards as a testament to their four years of hard work and dedication. And then we also had the Senior picnic, which was last Thursday, June thirteenth. Students received their yearbooks, walked out to the community center, and fuels, played games, and enjoyed food from various restaurants.
So baseball ended their season with a record of fifteen and fourteen. They upset Spardon, but unfortunately lost to my Essex, so playing a fight. Boys tennis ended with a record of six and fifteen, losing to Groban on the state tournament. Uh, softball also upset Oldsmobile Performance's Marsells in the state tournament, and they ended their season six, ten and sixteen. The boys golf team ended eleven and six, the girls ended eight and one, as all the women's championships champions. Boys lacrosse ended their season with a solid nine and nine record, but the girls team finished nine and eleven. And finally, the two MTH, two MTHS athletes of the track and field team gave it to the meet of champions last Valentine. Uh, Darien Ishichikak in the full hall finished out of the fall in the sixty meter meter, beating Peter. Uh, and Howlett's ended up taking the fifth place in the fifteen meter meter, rushing his previous school record at the time of twelve and twelve seconds. And then seniors courting, and then Jeff and Viall played at the first annual Philistine South Dog Football All-Star Game at King University, uh, where the North beat the South thirty-eight to twelve. And then for the present, finals started last Friday, June fourteenth, and continues through tomorrow, June nineteenth. And there are mainly two points left, uh, but the students with finals and staff and MTHS are still hard at work. And then, of course, the last day of school is Thursday, June twentieth, and graduation will be at seven P M, where MTHS will send out the fastest games of the year.
Thank you very much. Sounds like a lot's going on. Hope you all best. Yes, we have a lot of things. Hey, can I add something to that? Just want to especially congratulate even my recipients of multiple awards, of the senior awards, and mine is the class, senior classes doubt tutorial. And more members of our board. Actually have something.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, it's great. Uh, yeah, usually I wait for the, after all the awards, but we have so many group things I want to announce while I have the order this year. So one, I just want to start with the district goals. Uh, we have four district goals and fourteen different action plans underneath that. We are addressing mental health this year, uh, exploring ways to evaluate innovative learning opportunities, security protocols, as well as long-range facility plans and other things. So we accomplished all fourteen of those action plans and those protocols. The board has all the information about that, so I just wanted to report this out and inform you on our future goals at the end of this meeting. Also, we just were recognized, um... We were just recognized for the ninth year in a row for Montpel Township Public Schools receiving the Best Communities for Music Education from the National Association of Music Merchandise. This foundation is designed and awarded by the name of N A M Foundation to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. The PCME Award recognizes the commitment of teachers, students, and administrators, Board of Education members, and parents who believe in the value of music education and are working to assure that it's part of the complete education for their children. So nine years in a row, that's quite outstanding. Great job in that. We have, uh, something that's unusual, and it's just something that we have to note. There's a bus driver in town who's been working, currently works for, uh, the Dow Bus Company. And Ms. Sheila Francisco has been working for fifty-six years as a bus driver in town. And she's probably driven many of your around, uh, driving years. She'll be completing her last bus run this Thursday at eleven thirty. So the police are gonna give you a bus escort from Dow Bus Company up to the high school, and then she'll do a final run, fifty-six years. So we wish her well in retirement. Uh, incredible. Tonight on the agenda, we also had the supervisor's contract. So I want to thank Mr. Fleischner and Mr. Tubbs, along with the Board of Education Committee that was working on that. So that'll be for vote tonight, and a lot of work we're into that, and we're very happy that that's being brought to a conclusion. As well as the MTPA, they have a tentative agreement with the board, and they're working on some final things right there. So I want to thank Mr. Riado for all his work, along with this whole committee, along with the board subcommittee that worked on that. So that's a lot of work and a lot of hours towards that, so exciting news is there as well. And then, of course, we're celebrating all the retirees and our students and the Shopby stores. So today's a wonderful night of all the wonderful achievements that were, you know, that come to fruition after four years, and even this one year, uh, coming all together, so we're really happy about that. That's not reported.
So you, do you want to give a pretty business report first before we get off the boards?
We'll report.
That is easy. Okay, so we'll go to Shopby. Go to the desk.
Okay.
Good evening. I am thrilled to present our Shopby associates and company, which started in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, three years ago. And now we have faculty members of our department, and members of the society that we serve. In addition to the recognition of one of the students, Shopby generous gave us one thousand dollars for past two hundred and four, which showed the graduation issues for us to see. In the field of academics, congratulations to Hannah Wilson. Hannah is incredibly gifted, dedicated, compassionate, who's proudly maintained a footprint of foster getting throughout past careers. Hannah's passion for learning has demonstrated academic growth by taking the increasingly challenging courses that should have earned her career, only if she didn't, which she should be equal to the goal for a son. Despite the greater hand, it's on track to pass each of us, waiting for us as the shared and pay, and the teachers attribute this to her hard work, dedication, and perseverance. Unsurprisingly, Hannah also excels in looking to the doctors serving as the vice president of the tribe, under the Music Honor Society, the DOTA Union, Italian Honor Society, the National Honor Society, marching band, brass captain, and active member of the unions, chamber, jazz, and singing on the bands. Just like she did in her identity and musical pursuits, Hannah made herself proud to ensure that she was accepted into the college of the judges. Specifically, for the past two months, Hannah has attended five musical auditions for also dance and professional jazz. Hannah's athletic abilities, particularly with the tennis, acceptance is also a source of achievement, including one that she must retain in the year. The highly competitive programs which Hannah attends, which is a hundred and ten opportunities for audition, Hannah has won over fifteen to receive acceptance. In the fall, Hannah attends the Center for Cultural Education, who are at the University of Minnesota, who's a composition. Again, congratulations. In the field of academics, congratulations to James Conley. Don't see him here, but staff members who have observed his talent, leadership, and passion have literally arrived in thousands of bathrooms, but aren't enjoying his wonderful skills and accomplishments. Jimmy's an athlete who gets practice for a weight room, for a team, for a team, and really after other teams. Because of his positive, positive attitude, he should play his individual character, Jimmy's would give his everyone of his students. In terms of individual achievement, Jimmy was a voice of positive courage, always passed season, from second team, junior, and made a few events, and now fifty grand award winner. But Jimmy's much more proud of that, is that he has his entire team, his ambition, his engine. For example, his coach says Jimmy's energy, strongly excited, and his entire team, and he always got positive results, on one of those, on the field. As a huge workhorse, an athlete, and possibly a model, Jimmy also works hard often for his teammates and teammates. For example, this year, Jimmy was ranked at the leader of the averages, and he shows passion, and he will achieve the absizes, the absizes in this city. By now, Jimmy needs to show the good, the goodness in the sport. He said that the team is a good team, a good person, and a good sign. And thinking with all the reason, Jimmy chooses this work and that work.
All right, so we do that each quarter, so congratulations to all recipients. Now, once a year, we get to tell our retirees. We have, I believe, four retirees here this evening. We're going to start off with Cedarville. Dr. Raj.
Good evening. Mike Raj, University of Cedarville School. I'm here with me to present and honor Kevin Howe, who's been esteemed colleague of mine for several years. When Kevin came to Cedarville School several years ago, he immediately knew that we needed an incredible teacher. He quickly immersed himself into the fabric of Cedarville School and the surrounding community. He also himself first, after for his students, not only his students, but for all students at Cedarville School. The fact that one time, like Kevin, he left work, left home, the forehead of hair. Came home and was shaved because the students met their fundraiser goal and he said, "We need someone to shave their head." And Kevin was right there to do that. He would be very happy with us. Earlier this year, Kevin dropped a bomb on us that he sold his house. He was moving and he's retiring in just a few short weeks.
Oh, he can have.
He can have. This never really allowed us the opportunity to grasp what was happening. It happened so quickly. The students weren't ready. The staff wasn't ready. And now he wasn't ready for proving himself. Even though he was only down, retired for two short months, stories of Mr. Howe continued to circulate around Cedarville. Nathan is more of a great man than an incredible teacher. Years ago, Cedarville made international news. So maybe remember that around December. One day, I was doing lunch food, he walked me around, and I had got called to the office because some of the central office administrators were scared to take a tour of the building for some facility improvements there. Not knowing that Mr. Howe was dressed as the Alabama on the shelf in my office, perched like this for 40 minutes before I have to call to come to the office. Not being able to be seen like that by any view, he tried to get off that perch. Not realizing 40 minutes, what they do to your knees? Because knees were locked and his legs were cranked. He had to crawl on the floor and circulate around my desk. He followed there, like George from Seinfeld, taking a nap on the desk in the stadium. Were you there to stay there for another 20 days while we toured the building? He then came back and then quickly hopped back up on that perch to always bring a smile to our face because it was such a stressful time during that semester month and onset path around that time that he was just trying to bring some sort of luck into it. Kevin, closing, I hope your retirement gives you good health and list of five concert tickets to see a ticket event in the Rolling Stones. But most importantly, I hope it maintains fond memories of your time here in Montpelton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I was just a bit of a science teacher. Good evening, thank you for having me to speak about. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to honor and celebrate the remarkable career of my colleague and friend, Jimmy Gatt. She has been a exceptional educator, dedicated professional leader for the ZAR for 25 years. Her hard work and determination in providing the best quality of education for us which led her to create and dishonor our living lessons program. A tradition at the ZAR that has made an impact on so many lives. It is with immense gratitude, admiration, and yes, a little sorrow, but I must formally recognize and officially, your official retirement to thank you for all you've done for our school and our community to make it better. Your ability to connect with students, understand their needs, and encourage them to growth has earned me respect and admiration of your students in college. You have created a classroom environment whereby students, everyone, all students, feel valued, supported, motivated, and achieved their best. Your legacy will live on in the collective success achievements of the thousands of young minds who've worked with you. Your students came to me, I'm sure. So I did give them a few, picked out. She is very inspiring due to her perseverance to make the school a better place for everyone. This is all from people, two of them. She has made a major impact on our school from the color roles to living lessons she does. She made this school more inclusive in every way, walks through the halls. Many students and teachers look up to her as a role model. She teaches us the importance of life lessons every single day. She was an excellent teacher who will forever remember at the ZAR. She treats every kid like family and shows her love for each and every one of us. She has taught so many marks and changed people to be more inclusive in our school. And this is my favorite. Every single one of her lectures and speeches have important messages that should be spread worldwide. Love that. They might have you on a speech.
But if she told me this, I'm going to change her.
Look, the list, the list of compliments goes on and on, I can say it over and over. It is clear to your colleagues and your students that we are very sorry to see you. But we are so excited to be experiencing the joy of retirement and a new life you and your family will enjoy. As you embark on this new chapter of your life, we wish you all the joy, health, and fulfillment in the years to come. May you find as much happiness in your retirement as you brought from the lives of your students and colleagues. You will be greatly missed, but your legacy will live on in the hearts and in the minds of those you could touch in the ZAR. Thank you, congratulations, and model.
If I have Charlie Brown standing here, then I've made it in one.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Doug Sanford, high school principal. Standing next to me is Mr. James Queen, a member of our science department. Let me prepare words first and then talk more off the top of my heart. Jim is a former Princeton University's distinguished secondary school teacher, award of the state of high school. He started teaching in 1997 at St. Petersburg, St. Petersburg High School in Florida as a chemistry, physical science, and earth science teacher. There, he also coached JV football in the girls' track. Stepped away from education for a few years before getting back into the teaching profession in 2004 in Massachusetts. Moving to New Jersey where he started teaching at Grand Central Indian Hills High School. He was there for six years. Hopefully I have the numbers and dates all spot on. In 2014, about 10 years ago, and Jamie Kirby says this countless times, but I can say it at this point too. He was hired in October 2014, and I've said it in public settings, best mid-season pick-up ever, best free agent ever. Really landed in the high school, couldn't have found a better time, and made an instant impact in various technical courses and corporate activities, and had a terrific impression and influence on all his colleagues. He's coached, he's advised, different clubs at school. He's been a mentor to other teachers. Students rave about taking his different science classes. And I want to, when I can speak to Dr. Schwartz, when I say this, we rely on Jim Queen for so many different things. He's really become a pillar of the science department, which we're very proud of. We consider him one of our strongest departments at the high school. And most, much of that is due to the solid foundation, the rock, solidness of James, James Queen in terms of supporting our students as well as supporting his colleagues. Jim and I have had conversations over the past few years, talking about the most important things in life. I know that he's stepping away from education after almost a quarter century in education to really dedicate time to the most important things in life. And I have to brag for a second. You know, if he looks like he's in incredible shape, it's because he is. Him and his wife, he told me just the other day, they went 28 miles from Frenchtown to Lamberville and back, Frenchtown to New Hope and back. But anybody knows the canal is all developed urban, you know, it's not an easy, poor, short ride. Apparently, Mr. and Mrs. Queen make it easy. High school's going to get a loss starting next year because we're losing one of the colors of our school. I say that from the heart, I mean it sincerely. I've always valued the conversations I've had with Jim and so many other people have. Yeah, model will do the same, so I was pretending to be his model. Best of luck in retirement, and thank you for all your years of service. Hey, I'm Chris Henry. Joining me up here is Ms. Tammy Lombard, a former teacher here at Montpelton Township High School. And I apologize in advance if some of the things sound a little goofy. There are certainly examples similar. Let me talk some things about Tammy's past. I believe Tammy spent 19 years at Montpelton Township High School, almost 35 years in the field of education. Started in 1989, going through a few different school districts. She also picked up a BA in Biology from the College of Billy Cross, a post-baccalaureate teacher certification in comprehensive science from Montpelton State, and a master's in administrative science compared to Denny's. I think I want to talk about what Ms. Lombard, in addition to being an advisor to various clubs over the years and teaching numerous different courses and helping students achieve at the highest levels in the field of science, particularly biological sciences. And her name was one of our last comprehensive science serfs. Yeah, fast. They're new. The, what really goes down, or what was lost at Montpelton Township High School is the idea that when I joined Montpelton Township High School 13 years ago, there were very strong personalities in school. Certain departments had very big, bold personalities that commanded, had a presence, was thought throughout the school, thought about the students, thought about the community. As those people moved on from Montpelton Township High School for various reasons, there was this vacuum that was almost created. These big, bold presence, individuals had left the school and there were shoes to fill. And you never knew what type of person was going to step into that room. In science, it became very clear that Ms. Tammy Lombard was the person who stepped into that room. And I don't think she did it purposely. I don't think she did it saying, "I'm going to be the one that's going to step up and take everyone." She was unknowingly hoisted into that global life of colleagues. Because time and time again, every time we talk to other seasoned teachers from the science department and throughout the school, or novice teachers, people who are new to the profession, all they'd say were words that sounded like, "I want to be like Tammy Lombard in the classroom. I want to have her dedication, I want to have her care for students, I want to have her organization, her ability, her knowledge, her pedagogical skill." That's what she heard over and over again in the science department and around the school. And I think that came across when it was her colleagues that chose her as teacher of the year. Tammy left us midway through the year to move on to some things that go on in personal life. Similar to Mr. Jim Queen, it was a huge loss to the science department. Starting in September, we'll have a very different science department, a strong science department. It won't be the same without Ms. Tammy Lombard there. I can say that on behalf of the students who have had her. I can say that on behalf of colleagues who have worked with her. It's definitely a missing presence, big shoes to fill. But we do wish her the best of luck in her retirement. We thank you so much for your years of service. It will be a huge impact on the school that'll last for many years to come. Best of luck and congratulations, Ms. Tammy Lombard.
So, congratulations to all our retirees. Not quite retiring, but you are indeed, just better things, right? So you're available, we want to thank you for everything you've done as our photographs. It's not the easiest role, and we gather a lot of information to report out, get to see and contribute to a lot of conversations. I want to thank you for everything you did. We have two board resolutions for you and your partner in crime that have been officially included in the minutes of the hour. So you show your kids and your grandkids and everybody around, that you actually did this. Congratulations, everyone, thank you for everything you've done this past year. So thank you very much.
Honored student representing Ryan Sun in service of Montpelton Township Board of Education. Whereas Ryan Sun has served his extension on the Montpelton Township Board of Education. And whereas through his leadership, Montpelton Township Board of Education has made fresh insights into student concerns, student priorities, and what is on the minor junkie community. And whereas he has further contributed to the community by serving as a guidance spokesperson, sharing the student structure of the board meetings. And whereas Ryan Sun is similarly committed to help students and the school district as promoting peer communication between the board, district, administration, and student body. And whereas Ryan Sun has maintained a professional support on the board meetings, showing the strength of the board members, and strive to honor the proper etiquette of serving on school board. And whereas he has demonstrated his commitment to advancing education for all students without discussing his own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom, and now therefore be a result that Montpelton Township Board of Education recognizes Ryan Sun's dedication to commitment to advancing education opportunity and helping communication between the board, district administrators, and student body. And be a further result that members of the Montpelton Township Board of Education send their sincere appreciation for Ryan Sun for his dedication, for his dedicated service on Montpelton Township Board of Education. And be a further result that members of the Montpelton Township Board of Education send their best wishes to Ryan and all his future graduates.
All right, congratulations. So Ryan, we'll talk about you again. So Ryan is also the valedictorian of the class of 2024. So we want to congratulate you on that. And we also have the salutatorian here, Harab Alinti. Congratulations.
Okay, why don't we take a break for just two minutes? And people want to not sit around for the remainder of the recording. I don't blame you if you want to get onto your families and study. Your family, you're going to have a birthday. So just two minutes.
I want to put one, it's little one. Plural, singular?
Uh, sometimes I have two. I have four altogether. Normally I only have two of them here. I think girls usually stay home for showers, something like that.
My bless, I had no idea.
Yeah.
Wow, that's tremendous. More power to you, you do that. That's great.
I left all, I left all four of them home. I have to send my son, my brother, he played on vacation right now.
The Montpelton Ed is starting again. Audience is still in the center of the table, but we're still here. So let's pick up and down the superintendent's report. Any other items that you might have? No other items from the superintendent. Okay. There is good news in the agenda. I encourage people to read it. It's all these cool, excellent, interesting things, and it's amazing. All the really high-quality students we have in our system. We're going to be submitting reports, start with finance, Karen.
Hi, it's Jamie. Breaking for the week this evening, the finance and facilities committee. And we spent most of the time talking about some projects, summer facilities projects that we've been going on this summer. And we trust that it's going to be in on Friday, and we can leave a day after school ends. So I want to thank his son and her department for putting together a schedule that will improve our schools. And that's, that's really powerful for us.
Okay, thank you. Kirkland, Michelle?
No report.
Policy Joe?
No report.
Communications, Mike Rappert?
No.
Safety, Christine?
No, for the fall.
Okay. Delegate liaison, Matthew Karen?
I'm Amy Tean, the New Jersey School Board Association, how this delegate
On the main team, the New Jersey School Board Association held its delegate assembly and reporting resolutions discussed. Some were approved and substituted, resolved clauses. Some were not approved and will be referred to committee. And that's, that's happened since we've been here.
Oh wow. Michelle, North County School Boards?
They had a meeting to update the V I V I's and then actually move it on the fall.
Okay, thank you. Joe, starting with North County Educational Services. We met this Wednesday. We had a review revision of the board, the four year program representatives of that board. We had an election to choose fifteen of seven of board directors. Of those fifteen, I would choose one of the board directors. It's in 2024, we have it right here. And we also discussed some of the goals as well. Congratulations. And front office? We had a meeting on June sixth. And last day of school, the Zara sponsor, the E three event, and also presenter, Dr. Matt Farris, who is speaking to the students afterwards. Great, wonderful. Okay, Charlie, Montpelton Flat, please.
Karen had a meeting the last one was out, last one for like two weeks.
Okay, Karen, senior liaison?
I'm having one.
Charlie, Hildale?
No report.
Joe, Valiou? Valiou had a meeting the last one year yesterday. They just discussed their frontages they had, they have a current tricky trade for the fall. They did their elections for their offices next year. That's good. John, Wayne Mason?
No report.
Okay, Mike Homble, what?
Last Thursday, last meeting of the year, the traditional last meeting with your venue, a wood stack, or four different things.
Good, okay. Michelle, Zara? Mike, Rappaport, High School?
No report.
Okay, let's talk about negotiating with Karen, the T E A. Ryan mentioned that there is some progress.
At three thirty in the morning, uh, a week ago, that's on June fourth, the assistance of a mediator, Board of Education and the Montpelton Education Association reached a tentative agreement. At mediator's request, in terms of the contract or confidential at this time. I just wanted to add that as in years past, it was, it was a pleasure negotiating with the association. Our negotiations remain respectful, friendly, and productive. It wasn't always easy. Times were not always easy, but we got it done in a very respectful way. And I'm pleased that we were able to reach a tentative agreement of before school ended, before school ends. So I wish the M T E A a happy, safe, restful summer. In particular, the M T E A negotiating committee who worked very hard to reach the agreement. Thank you.
And next time around, try to get enough for real.
Yeah. I did.
She did. Okay, and we have contracts for the other two bargains.
The several of the administrators, as you know, I think, though already now they've been approved, they're getting their greatest contract and assignment by everybody. And supervisors, Joe is the chairman, I would like to thank him for chairing it. We do have a member in agreement, and I understand they have signed the contract also, am I right? So they're for world seventh and fourth July first also.
Excellent. And Joe from, also. Thank you, Joe. Just that, we want to agree as well. Yeah, negotiations are not easy. As you all know, they're not, they're not a joy, but they are a necessity, and we do have very good respect for our staff, our teachers, and I think they respect us, and so we know that we're doing a job, an important job, and it's gonna be done. Okay, how about participation? Anything on the agenda? You have any comments for anything on the agenda, any questions? Please come to the microphone and tell us your name and. Seeing none? I've asked for a consent resolution on items I through N, so second. Okay, any questions on the minutes? Section J, questions?
Just one comment on J with calendars, just two quick revisions. We have for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, we had to move one of the half days on June seventeenth and put it on the May twenty-third, which didn't update that earlier. For the twenty-five, twenty-six now in the year, we just did not include the half day before Thanksgiving, because we also changed.
Okay, so we, so Karen should be maybe aware of that. Okay, item, K, Finance and Sales, any questions on any of those items? Personnel, item L. Any questions? And lastly, I don't know how to say that. Curriculum, section M? And lastly, anything in the policy, nothing in the policy, so. Okay, Roy Hawkins?
Mr. Graff?
Yes, on everything except that I'm staying on, I'm staying on course.
Mr. Dodger?
Yes, on everything, I'm staying on section K, check eight, four lines of.
Dr. Cortina?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna, yes? Mr. Palmer?
I'm staying on section I, yes, and everything else.
Mr. Petrosina?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
I'm staying at one, row two, yes, everything else.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Dr. Bogart?
Yes.
Okay, is there any, are there any old business items people have, you know, the old business, do you think so? Okay, section R, general board times and new business. While we take care of the board and district goals real quick? Yeah, we do care, the district plus, that's easier. Okay, so.
These are the same goals that we had last year, and we're just continuing going forward. We've done a lot of progress on these goals, and as we said last time, that we just keep on changing the action plan underneath them. So each one of these could have, say, two or four different action plans underneath each one of these goals, and we continue to be in progress over the years. So I'd like to keep them the same as we move forward.
Um, I'll just reiterate that first one is implement, enhance, and evaluate ways to address mental health. The second one is explore and evaluate innovative learning opportunities for all students. The third one is continue to evaluate the safety and security protocols of the district. And the fourth one is monitor the completion of current construction projects and evaluate the district's facilities and update long-range facility. Does anybody have any comments on the district goals? Any comments from the board members on these reports?
Right, so.
Then why don't we hold off on a vote on those and put them in with the board goals? Now, we had a dozen board goals that were suggested to the board. I asked for your comments and what you thought were the top board goals. I narrowed it down to the top five. And from here, I'd like to take the top three if that's possible. Okay, so the first one, and we'll take comments after this goal. First one was provide the district administration to enable the, yeah, provide supportive district administration to enable a successful completion of construction aspects of facilities across the district. This is the same as last year. Does anybody have a comment on that goal? Any comments? Okay. The second one was to increase communication with the community to ensure transparency and continued collaboration. Anybody have any comments on that one? The third one was to establish a process to measure school wellness and find and use the data to inform practice to create positive growth, engage students, and a healthy sense of belonging within the district. Anybody have any comments on that one? We all are pretty quiet. Okay, the fourth one was to attract, develop, and retain excellent quality staff with a focus on relevant professional development through mindfulness and cultural responsiveness and twenty-first century teaching strategies. Yeah, am I?
I do.
Okay.
I love this one except the cultural responsiveness, responsive. I feel like we do such an outstanding job from when the kids are young to when they get older. I feel as though I want to hire our others, our administrators to hire the best and brightest, but not concern themselves with certain things. See it in other school districts where someone will hire based on cultural responsiveness and then Halloween is taken away. So I just want the best. And I also feel like it can put more pressure on our teachers that may, they don't need and that it is not required. So that, just that one section, I would ask.
So you just want to stop the professional development for the period?
Correct. So what would it read like?
So it would then read, we'll attract, develop, and retain excellent quality staff with a focus on relevant professional development.
That's wonderful. That's perfect.
Is that anybody else that they?
That's four.
That's number four. Does anybody have a comment on that as well?
I, I sent my comments really, but it's, here's the microphone.
Yeah, so I'm okay with that, but I was gonna say stop sooner than that. But the, the Board of Education will attract, develop, and retain excellent quality staff.
Period.
I don't have any issue with that goal as written. I think we need to be aware that our demographics are changing. We have greater diversity, and anything that can help a child feel more comfortable by a teacher's practice, knowledge, or culture helps the child, helps the student. And I, I don't, but I wouldn't want to see, um, there is a student who's unloved one because of their, with their culture and their original culture.
So you would keep the entire thing as that?
I would.
Okay, third. Mike?
Yeah, I think you had mentioned it to my track, it's not three.
Yes.
I recommend dropping this one, that's a great goal to have, but Wayne's written, it said, it said, it's attracting quality staff, and that's more of a job of, of forming this staff. And we're just overseeing, we're not advertising, we're not hiring these people. I think the other goals speak more to what these board can do, and how to support. Not people attracting quality staff, we're just supporting Dr. Warren, making sure that he has everything he needs to hire right staff, definitely. So another step, I recommend moving this one and moving to the first part. I know you're over it though.
That's the best fourth option. Michelle, you have a comment?
I mean, I actually think it's confusing the way it's worded, because you can interpret the mindfulness and cultural responsiveness to being in how you hire them versus how you, I agree with Karen that we need teachers to be aware of our diversity and mindfulness and everything going on today. But I think the way it's supported, we need to allow different interpretations, which probably doesn't serve the whole goal any time.
I would just drop it. And Mike, did you have a comment?
Yeah, here's the guy who's five, I think, two of the four are over. He worked, I mean, spread like a month from the five, I would say, he loved this.
And I would tend to agree on dropping goal number four. But again, we're gonna go on our top three. So let me just read the fifth goal, and we'll take a vote on which one's gonna be the most important. So the fifth one is promote a collaborative teaching, learning, and assessment environment that inspires creativity, innovation, and differentiation to support all boardrooms. Does anybody have a comment on that? Well, it looks, from the comments that everyone just gave us, it looks like goal number four is probably off the table. Okay, so let me just ask, let me just go through the list. Beginning with goal number one, I would ask, you're gonna get three votes. Give me your top three votes, okay?
I take the goal four.
You want four goals?
I don't know which one.
Exactly.
You need to have your center.
Sure. Who wants four goals? Me and Hannah. Four goals? How about we drop number four? That's it. There we go. We're done. Congratulations. We have our goals. Now we have to have a vote on the goals. So we have this one.
You just have to number two. I mean, what can we do? We can have our own, we can do the goal. I think we've got pretty good communication.
Well, there is an action plan underneath, and so there will be items there for the administration to propose in order to improve communication with the district. I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
Yes, I think you're right, I just think that, I don't think that communication on that would be this problem, so. I think, I, I don't think this, this is important, this is the, just for goal, I think. Basically, we do.
Okay, this is, since there is an objection. Can we have a vote? Wait, I, I would, I would side with Mike, I just think we did an excellent job communicating to the community, and we can increase it, we can continue our rate. But not as, not as. I just want to increase it, not, not as a goal. You want to see increased communication to the community.
I think so. I, I, I think, I do think it's worth while, yeah, because I think it's worth while just because communication is so challenging today with all of the different methods and social media, and people relying in different ways and approaching it in different ways. And Stu does an amazing job, but I, I do think in today's times, it's a worthwhile goal for us to give rise to.
Yeah, and I, I think that the referendum not passing wasn't a result of board communication, but perhaps in some residents' minds, it, they didn't feel communicated to enough. I believe that, I've heard that from board members on the board, that some people in the community felt that we didn't do enough communication. So there's a lesson to be learned there, and I would keep this one.
I say we vote, I say we vote too. Does anyone else have any other comments on that goal? I asked for comments earlier on the goal. I didn't get them, but we got them now, so I'd like to vote it in and just ask for a vote, okay? So.
Just clarify with the word.
Okay, with, with the word changed from increase to continue. So the word education will continue communication with the community to ensure transparency and continued collaboration. Okay, maybe. May I have a motion, please, to vote on board goals and district goals as outlined? As I outlined, so four district goals, four board, board goals, is the one change to goal number two.
I make a motion.
Okay. I would ask a roll call.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Which board goals are we voting on?
The board goals are number one, support the district administration to enable successful completion of construction. Number two is continue communication with the community to ensure transparency and continued collaboration. Number three is a process to measure school wellness and climate and use the data to inform practice and create positive for information and a healthy sense of belonging. And then the fourth goal, fourth board goal would be promote a collaborative teaching, learning, and assessment environment that inspires creativity, innovation, and differentiation to support all learners. So there are four board goals, four district goals, and we have a motion for a vote. So there are four board goals, four district goals, and I ask, we have a motion for a vote, so vote, vote, please.
Mr. Gaudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Dr. Cortelina?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrosina?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Dr. Boga?
Yes.
Yes, they will need a minute.
So before we vote tonight?
We're not voting yet.
Okay.
We will get to relay it live in just one moment. Actually, one, go ahead and mention that.
Thank you.
So, relay for live in the town hall today, um, the board raised, Board of Education through their own personal plans, has raised more money this year than we have in part ways. We raised twelve hundred dollars, thank you to each and every one of you for a wonderful speech that called, uh, the Town Hall Relay, uh, which was held on Sunday, I would say, raised as of, uh, last week, sixty-five thousand dollars and the, um, you can still donate through the office. Um, and since I have a mic, I did attend Chinese School graduation on June ninth and also I attended Rabbi Feinbaum's retirement dinner, we had a very nice time.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, before we leave though, another important participation section. If you have any comments on any item, whether on agenda or off the agenda, anything you wanna say at all to the district, please come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and let us know, thank you.
Uh, my name is Josh Saskin, I'm eleven, I'm a graduate of Montville. And I think I'm here to speak on, just for here for a matter of that, just for voice count, so this is something that I'd love to address. Um, our young, our little son is a marching band member, he's been here this year. Um, we were informed earlier this year that the marching band is gonna be traveling to the away football games. And we got a month old email from Mr. Justin Ovey saying that that is continuing. There's only currently we can speak to, why that was denied on those streets.
Not qualified, I'll look into that, I don't know what you have.
All right, because. I think from the DNR or whatever, contact information.
Sure, I mean, because they used to travel years ago to the away games. It was taken away years ago before I was involved in marching band, a lot. Um, and all the kids wanna do, all the parents wanna do it, and we're, we're wondering if it's gonna happen, it's taken away. And honestly, it's a little embarrassing because every single time I'm at a home game, every single marching band from the opposing team is there. And all the cheerleaders, I believe, goes to the away games, I believe. And we can't find funding for the marching bands to go for, maybe four away games, or you run bust. I just don't understand why we can't make that happen.
It's not a funding issue, but what will it be?
Well, that's fully resolved, Mr. Justin Ovey said that they were, it was cut from the budget and that's the reason why.
We'll just find out what is in place.
Right, people are getting to it and try to make this happen, this is a ledger, my son, marching band, you're welcome to it, we're all about to do it, and if we can make it happen, that would be awesome. If there's anything that we can do on our end to help, that's not.
We'll get to that with the access. Yeah, we've got a near contract.
Yeah, we have, we have, okay, thank you.
Um, my name's Hannah James and I have four children, two of them are currently at, uh, William's then, and I have my third son, Jamie, who's in kindergarten, and my daughter, Kristen. Um, I've already seen, you know, start seeing some of the things that they have. I know that I share the same, to this point, I've had a record, and I understand that, that kind of the government is hard, states and finances and all of that, um, I was disappointed, um, feel like I did my part in supporting it, um, and disappointed in the result. However, I now face a parent who's looking at me, I'll try to avoid, and I'm going into kindergarten and currently this class size is forty-nine students and there are two kindergarten classes, so we're looking at classrooms of twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and my understanding is that the third kindergarten, we have split, have another third kindergarten room until we reach over twenty-six students per classroom. So that's twenty-six five-year-olds, um, gaining to do, one teacher, one age, eight, obviously, now they're all starting to hold frequently. Um, and again, simply speaking from my perspective, my five-year-old is a very good reader. He tested out of every single kindergarten assessment that they gave him, um, he can read on the first level. And, uh, I have multiple teachers in our family, everyone has shared with me, the kids who end up getting kind of the short end of the stick, when it comes to the situation that are the high achievers in the classroom, um, which is natural, that's, that is simply the way it's gonna go. Um, but so that means that me as a parent, I'm looking at my five-year-old, knowing that he is not going to get the same attention he would get in classroom, if the classroom was the same size. Um, I attended the birthday where, I think, the average classroom size in Montville in the distribution, all the different elementary schools, I would say, was twenty children. Um, that might have changed, that that is what was said in the, I believe, the leading, immediate active record of that, twenty students were the average classroom. Obviously, to have an average class size, there are only ten classes that are larger than that and certainly not arguing that, um, but to have that be a kindergarten classroom, I think is, is really, really dangerous to the standard of that, being kind of old here in Montville and expect here in Montville and wanting to continue to have here in Montville. Um, to have students commit to kindergarten, it's very normal type kids who can't read, to have, it's very normal type kids who don't know all of their letters, can't count their spelling. And then you have children like my son, who is, is doing great and, and, and that's wonderful. It's not impressive that has kindergarten score, it's to help get everyone more on the playing field. Um, to hand to teachers, twenty-six five-year-olds, I think is really, really disappointing. Um, and I'm simply asking for their, their consideration and their look around. I know that the program has been recently moving, so I would do, so it is my understanding that we have to make sure additional, this one additional classroom, additional, two additional classrooms now, if only they said, we don't know if they're being useful, but I would love to know what is being prioritized to open up their kindergarten class. Um, again, this is simply coming from an emotional office, looking at a five-year-old who wanted to pass the kid, uh, so I've had talked to both of the kindergarten teachers and assured them that I will work with them and try to kind of pick up the stuff from my child at home. Um, but I also guaranteed them that I would send email and that I would be here and I would be the voice of just trying to share my disappointment and my, honestly, getting reading, better reading, better consideration, um, and better look around to see if we potentially do something for them.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for your support and your whole effort, and we really appreciate it. And it seems like you really understand the issues that we're facing. So, over the summer, we always look at all the evolements, we'll take a look at that. You know, when kids move in, kids move out, so you don't want to make a decision too early, uh, as that goes, but as we see over the next couple of weeks, what's going on with the evolements, that we'll then make a decision about if we have to split the class or just split it back. But, uh, that might resolve the issue this year, but going forward, it's becoming more and more difficult. That is one of the reasons why we moved the special equipment review value to create space because it is no longer an issue. So, uh, we are gonna be looking at that in the next couple of weeks, but we do hold off until the summertime to see what truly happens with all the movements. And I don't want to split it yet because my five kids move out and I have five in opinion, so they can figure that out, but we'll be looking at that and we'll make a decision and say, that's for all the parents.
Um, and can you tell me, is there a different plan in place, or are you bored about that classroom?
Uh, I, I don't off the top of my head, I have some concerns about that. But yeah, the board, and the board does have a limit, so we're right at that spot where the limit is. And you are correct, the numbers were lower and they are increasing a little bit across the board. Yes.
Um, I, I mean, the highest kindergarten class was twenty-two students, which was last year. At this current kindergarten, I will report that, was twenty-two students and so now we're currently looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, twenty-two teachers that they're working space for the desks, so I, I just, I, I obviously I didn't have a classroom to hold this in there. I don't know where they're going to put twenty-five five-year-olds. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I appreciate it.
We do appreciate your concerns and we are also very concerned about moving the space and the administration will work as hard as we can to make sure. And anyone else? Well, I, I just think it's all, yeah, so I, I, I told you, are you saying that it's a possibility based on how things, you know, happen in the summer, that, that there could be a good class?
Yeah, I mean, if you had to say you had like five more kids who have been, they also have the fifty-something, you'd have to split that class, it just could just be too difficult. And then we'd have to really make some more decisions about how, what the ripple effect is with the rest of the school.
But if the numbers were to stay the way they are and then you shook out, you know, there wasn't a teacher and there was a classroom, is that a possibility or?
Well, then I, so we'll actually, we'll look at the numbers and then I have to come back to the board and say, you know what, we have a classroom, the numbers warrants it, and then we need another teacher and then we have to start looking at the summer environment. So I, so we do this every single summer, so we look at the numbers every summer and then we make a decision. The board then decides sometime in July or, you know, early August, if we have to, and then you give me the okay and we make decisions, whichever way it goes, yeah.
You know, June is the month where everyone seems to be there and all the houses flipped and that's when we get our greatest influx and then they have to register, they have to know that they're town and, yeah, it's always July, August, and then the finals, everything, but it's hard to predict. When could a member of the public find out when a, when that decision's made?
Uh, well, well, right, well, I mean, we, again, we'll be hoping, yeah, but it'll be late July when we're, we're, I gotta see how the movement starts going about. And as we see things trending, we're wanting a decision, then we'll come back to the board. I'm saying this just by way of act of honor because I was hearing something's happening regarding marching band, I'm not trying to object myself to the decision, I'm not betting. But I'm saying this just to enhance the presence as to why things might have happened long before the start of the administration's effect, um, historically. And as everybody remembers back in two thousand ten, we had the massive budget cuts. What happened at that time was that the band budget was cut fifty percent and the athletic budget was not cut and the band parents were enraged. Now, they were thinking five thousand dollars to send the band to the away games and band parents at that time had philosophies saying, you know, they distort their away games and why don't we take that five thousand dollars and put it back in our budget and forget about the away games? And that was when the band stopped going to the away games. Um, at that time, I think there were a lot more competitions than there were and at that time, there's highly limited band people because, I think at that time, I don't know if it's related to that, but that time, the general philosophy of people in band were, on a Friday night, they probably had a competition the next day. And if they wanna do anything on a Friday night, it wasn't gonna be Trent to Vernon to play in stands, it was gonna be on our own field to practice for our competition for tomorrow. So that was really the history of how it happened, that the band stopped going to the away games. Now, if that's, if, if the thought process of the band is different now, I don't know, but that's something that, that's worked out with us, I'm just giving a history.
Okay, um, the administration will take care of that, it'll be enjoyed and they'll, they'll work with the parents and the band and all. Um, seeing no other comments from the public, I'll close that section of the meeting. I ask for a motion for adjournment. Motion for adjournment, thank you so much, second. Okay, good night, everyone, see you in July.